If you can text Vice Mayor Lewis, I know she's been in touch with you. That would be great, but I think we should start the meeting. Anthony, can you do the roll call?
Yes, so we have Councilmember Weest.
Here.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yep.
Councilmember Lempres.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lewis will be joining us hopefully soon and Mayor DeGolio.
She is, she is here, you'll probably just need to unmute her. I don't know which number she is. Can you text me your number, Elizabeth?
Hello, hello.
There she is, there she is, perfect.
Hello. I got on and it says your host has muted me. So does that mean I can't talk?
You're 8830, Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, I am.
Okay, welcome, Elizabeth.
Hello there, Mayor DeGolio and all.
Okay. Do we have any? Yeah, I think you missed the roll call, everybody's on the line.
Okay.
Do we have any public comments at this time?
Yes, sir, so I'm going to read the three public comments that we received in advance of the meeting and so I'll read them into the record, I'm going to read them in their entirety.
And just before you do that, let me just state for purposes of management of this first 100% remote council meeting, that anybody who is on the line that wishes to provide a public comment, you can do so by clicking on the participants' bar line at the bottom of your screen and it will give you a list of all of the participants on the line, there are currently 20. And at the bottom of that list, there are three windows, one of which says raise hand. And if you click raise hand, then we will know and and we will recognize you and you can provide your public comment and Anthony will manage that. And if you'd just please introduce yourself and provide your address, that would be appreciated. If you don't have that ability to connect by this little raise hand menu, you could send Anthony either an email or a text at the number that was provided on the agenda and he will make you able to provide the public comment. And if you, for some reason, don't have the ability through the audio connection to provide it, if you send him your comment in text or email, he will read it into the record. So if you would go ahead and read those comments that we have, Anthony, I'd appreciate it.
Will do. So the first one that I'll read, it's from William Grant, Atherton resident, and it goes as follows. "Today I noticed, I notified you by phone that this cleanup work, including blowing while the worker was sneezing, is, while the worker was sneezing, is being done today during the lockdown in our city on an unoccupied house at 88 Park Drive built over a year ago. I requested the workers stop in view of San Mateo prohibition, but they refused. Very often, some literate workers in the past have been known to relieve themselves in the yard or leave lunch wraps and food remains near or on the street, exposing residents attempting to get some respite by taking walks. There is now special concern with community and business shutdowns for medical reasons for protection from the coronavirus. Please request the city council tonight to act to protect Atherton residents by requiring strict conformance with the San Mateo State federal laws and orders for protecting us and others from the coronavirus." That was completed again, William Grant, Atherton resident, he's on Park Avenue. The next one that we received was from Jeannie Jensen and it goes as follows. "I hope you're staying healthy during this time. I see there will be a town council meeting tonight and I wanted to share my perspective on the new decision to allow construction to continue. As an ADAP board member, our mantra is to take care of yourself, your family, and then your neighbors, in that order. The allowing of construction seems unsafe for multiple but related reasons. One, the obvious one being potential spread of the virus. Our town and surrounding counties is officially in shelter-in-place mode and to truly flatten the curve, we all need to stop what we're doing unless our health and safety is immediately at risk. Two, a significant percentage of our town's population is near the high-risk age and we know that residents are still trying to stay healthy and active by going on walks around our schedule, our secluded and protected town. But if there are construction workers not using the best aseptic techniques, for example, portable toilets without hand washing options, it's an easy way to ensure our residents could contract something, even if it's COVID. To add to that, there is already a very limited supply of proper disinfecting wipes and sprays and gels to have them be used by construction teams is not the best way to use those very limited resources. Three, not to say this is applicable to every Atherton resident, but typically the homes that are built here are not also currently being lived in. The shelter-in-place mandate states that essential infrastructure, including construction of housing and operation of public transportation and utilities is allowed. I understand while it is in place, if the only other option is for a resident to not have a home at all, but may we strongly consider triaging Atherton Town Construction for residents where it is directly necessary only to maintain the resident's health and safety." Thank you for passing this along. Again, that's from Jeannie Jensen. Just going to make sure that we don't have anybody waiting to be added into the meeting. Okay, and now for our last public comment that I received in advance of the meeting. It's from Nancy Brandon. "First, let me say that I appreciate all that you do for our town. Thank you for your service. I have learned that the town is allowing construction on new single-family homes. I can understand an exception for homes presently being lived in. However, I'm referring to homes that are being, that aren't being lived in at this time. I think that is exactly what the six-county quarantine is to prevent. See segment below. It is in a group gathering together for a nonessential purpose. These crews are huge, they share portable toilets, they are often forced to work within six feet of one another. Working side by side is sometimes needed for a task. They are not sanitizing every surface as they go, they are opening the same gates, the list goes on and on." I'm just going to take a pause to admit some people to the meeting. "Even if careful measures were put in place to try to mitigate this, those precautions will not always work due to human error and it would still be against the intent of the shelter-in-place ordinance. I am not worried that these crews in the two properties adjoining mine at 19 Cowell Lane, 29 and 30 Cowell Lane, will infect me or my family directly, but they will surely be in the position to impact the greater community by not sheltering in place. But instead sharing germs all day and returning to the respective communities each evening just to come back to the following day and share new germs and so on. And ultimately, if these workers spread COVID-19 unintentionally, it may get back to Atherton residents in the general transfer model that shelter-in-place is trying to control. Allowing building of these homes gives the message that Atherton is not serious about COVID-19 or is uninformed, but also gives the message to any other service provider in Atherton that they should be able to work. Personally, as I am sheltering in place to obey the law, to obey the law, it is very annoying to listen to construction and truck noise all day. I assume the portable toilet service providers are allowed in and delivery trucks with materials. We are an elite community. I've lived here for 15 years and I appreciate that, but it's my opinion that we should not be elitist by allowing workers to infect one another in other communities for the sake of mansions being built. We should not be a part of the spread of COVID-19." Again, that's provided by Nancy Brandon, and that's all I have at this point. I see that somebody has their hand raised.
I note that a number of people have joined during that presentation of public comment. If anybody who has joined wishes to make a public comment, you could do so now. You could also do so if it's applicable to one of the items on the agenda when we get to that item. But if you wish to do so now, if you click the participants' item at the bottom of your page, it will bring up a screen and there's a raise hand window at the bottom of that screen, which you could click and you can provide public comment that way or you can provide it by texting or emailing Anthony Subert.
So in line with that, I have two people with their hand raised. I'm going to unmute the person labeled John now for his public comment.
Yes, this is John, Alejandra Avenue, and while obviously the COVID virus, hold on.
Sorry, John, can you give your full name and your address?
Anthony, unmute John.
I, I, I am.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
You can, thank you.
Okay, this is John Freund and I live with my wife at 86 Alejandra Avenue. And obviously, the COVID virus is consuming a lot of our attention, but I think we have to also separately recognize that we have a serious crime problem in Atherton. Burglaries have been on the rise a couple streets away from us in the last couple of weeks. Two women taking a walk in broad daylight afternoon, shortly afternoon, were mugged, thrown down to the ground and threatened with a gun in broad daylight. And I think we need to, I know we've been considering license plate readers at a few limited locations and I think we should roll them out into many locations throughout the town. I know I was at a town meeting six months ago and there were a few people who were worried about privacy, but everybody around me was not so worried about privacy. They trust the Atherton police to do the right thing. But what we were all worried about in the group around me, who I didn't know, was crime in town. And it's obvious that the police don't have the tools to solve these burglaries and some of these other things. And if they knew the license plate numbers, they might. It certainly isn't going to hurt and it couldn't help. It's helped in other towns and I think that we should roll them out. And we're a wealthy town, they're not that expensive. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, John, for your comment.
Thank you.
Anthony, did you have another public comment?
I do, I have one from Mike Greenlee, who I will unmute now.
Mike, can you hear us?
We can move on and when I see his hand raised again, I can send you a message about it.
Great, okay, let's move on. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In the interest of time, you have the written report before you staff, as you know, on the line to answer any questions that you might have. But there wasn't a lot of Q and A in advance. A couple of the items were old items. That report that's on the agenda was from March 6th, data in your city council notes. So it's old information mostly. We have since issued the COVID proclamation and done a few other things since then, but staff's happy to address any questions the council may have. That concludes my report.
Does anyone on the council have a question?
I see Elizabeth Lewis has her hand raised. I'm going to unmute her and lower and allow her to speak.
Hi, Elizabeth. For five in the city, can you hear me?
Good.
We haven't heard you before, so could you start over?
Oh, okay, now you can hear me. So item number five on the city manager's report talks about the Caltrain station closing and potential timeline of that. I just want to throw out that this is going to be a very significant event when it finally closes and maybe we will be in happier times when it finally is finished because it looks like we're talking about 2021 before some of the decisions are made and then after that. Maybe we could have or start to plan a closing party, a goodbye party or a fond memories event. I know there's many, many residents who have very fond memories and photographs and I think it would be a time to bring the community together to say goodbye to the station.
Certainly something we could, certainly something we could think about. I appreciate that. Just FYI, I had Anthony unmute all members of the council. I don't want to have to, you'd be talking and then he's going to unmute you and then you have to say it again, duplicate. So just keep that in mind with your background noise. If you have a lot going on, you can mute yourself and then unmute.
Sure, okay, thank you.
I actually have a question, Mr. Mayor, Mike Lempres. It's sort of two part questions, either for the chief, I don't know if he's there, the chief is there, or George, which is, I saw the stats in here about crime and about responses to high schools. I'd ask two questions. One, has the crime rate, you know, jumped recently? Has there been a noticeable change in that? And two, with the schools closed, do we expect that to have an effect on reallocating officer time?
Chief?
I can unmute the chief now. He can unmute himself as well. Chief?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
So a comment to the first part about increased crime in Atherton, I would say no. We still are very lucky to have one of the lowest crime rates in the county and in the state of California. As for the school being closed, yes, the school resource officer has been fully reassigned back to patrol, which is the normal instance anyway when school is out, but particularly to assist with our COVID responses.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add something to the comment that Elizabeth made, which is, given that the Caltrain has delayed because they have some internal processes that they need to deal with, I suggested to the city manager that Atherton take, suggest to Caltrain that we take the responsibility to prepare the first draft of the MOU, which frankly, I didn't have great hopes that they would agree to because it's always an advantage to do the first draft. And to my surprise, they agreed to authorize the city manager to proceed with us providing the first draft of the MOU. So that is in the process. But I, but I think given, you know, the COVID-19 issues and everything that's going on right now in the county, which is obviously the highest priority, that there's no assurance exactly when this thing's going to take place. I think the idea of a celebration is a great thing that we should all talk about, but I think we have plenty of time to figure it out, how to deal with that. We don't even know when the possible closing would occur.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make the point, I don't believe we're fully committed to a closing. So I think that's kind of premature.
We have to see what the MOU says because that's, that's going to involve all of the issues, right? I mean, that's the legal issues that we have to, it's dependent on the MOU, 100%. Is there any other comment regarding hands raised or anyone having a comment? So we'll move to the consent calendar. Does anyone from the public wish to pull anything from the consent calendar? These are items seven through 14, although item, I think it's nine, has been removed and will not be considered tonight.
That's correct.
Hearing no comment from the public, does anyone on the council wish to pull anything or have any comment on the consent calendar?
One moment, Mayor DeGolio, Councilmember Weest thinks he's muted and he may have something.
Okay.
He got kicked out.
Must be his poor internet connection.
You're in, you're in, Councilmember Weest.
I, I'm back and I've been unmuted. I would just like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar number seven through 14, omitting number nine.
I second it. Okay, all in favor? I think we need to do a roll call vote here, Anthony.
So I'll do the roll call. Councilmember Weest.
Aye.
Councilmember Widmer.
Aye.
Lempres.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
So that moves us to the regular agenda, item 15.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Hello? I'm sorry, Councilmember Lewis.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did have a question on item number 13. I misunderstood and that that was in the consent. Can I, but I'll, hmm. Is it too late for me to ask a question about that?
That's a Mona issue.
That's okay. This is Mona. The issue has been voted on, but at the pleasure of the council, you can discuss it. If you do discuss it, we have to open it up again to public comment.
No problem. I think it would be fine for you to give a comment, Elizabeth.
All right, I'm sorry. I got my 13 and 15 mixed up. I just wanted to ask the question about R3 role in this that we're approving in that it is to negotiate and prepare a draft, but it also says and a final contract and a final franchise agreement. And I would hope that council would be able to approve the draft before it becomes a final franchise. And I'm just not sure that I even agree with going forward with the, well, item number 16 is the next one, but item number 13. I just wanted to see how that, the wording seemed to me that they're preparing a draft and a final franchise agreement.
The city attorney would be involved at any point when we draft the agreement. So we want to make sure legal counsel is involved from the town.
But the council gets to review that draft?
City council or legal council?
City council.
Yeah, the agreement ultimately has to be approved by the city council, so yes.
Do we, do we review the draft before the final goes out?
The, you have a subcommittee that will ultimately be working with staff and R3 to develop that. And that subcommittee would be reviewing the draft as it moves along and the final would then be presented to the council. But between the draft and the final, I'm assuming that there's also going to be a city council presentation on where we are and those sorts of things. But it is a negotiation, so a lot of that's not done at the council meeting itself.
This is Mona, just to provide a little bit more clarification. Item number 13 authorizes staff and me particularly to prepare a contract amendment to allow R3 consulting groups to continue their work on behalf of the town for the solid waste negotiations and preparing agreements that will ultimately need to come before the council before they're actually approved. However, the subcommittee can work with staff and R3 in the interim to compose the terms of those agreements before it comes before you. Yeah, so what we're agreeing to is just the amendment of their contract and part of their amended contract would be to prepare a draft for discussion and review by staff and council and then subsequently a final agreement. It's not, they're preparing a draft and a final at the same time.
Correct, they're not doing both at the same time.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with.
And, and George, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that Councilmember, Vice Mayor Lewis's concern is to be able to have some input in the process while the negotiations is going on and I'm sure that the subcommittee, I mean, this is going to take a couple of months, so the subcommittee will be reporting to the council and there should be opportunity to give feedback as, as they're discussing the issues.
Okay.
If they're, if, yes, yeah, there's ways to do that without, mostly that feedback would probably come via me to the whole council at a, at a public meeting or in a public document, but I would not, and Mona can probably elaborate as well. I wouldn't envision that this contract, draft contract goes to the council and then the council at a public meeting starts commenting on legal strategies and negotiation at the public meeting. I wouldn't envision that's what occurs.
I agree with that.
Okay, it doesn't seem like there's any action item there. Correct me, anybody if I'm wrong, but I think we should move on to item 15.
Absolutely, thank you. Because we pulled this for a further discussion, I do respect.
Sorry, Mona, you were right. You had suggested that prior. Let me just check and see if there's any public comment on this issue regarding item 13, which is approving an extension to the R3 agreement to work with the potential contractor that would replace Recology.
I have no hand messages, no emails.
So we see no raised hands, we see no emails, so it doesn't appear as though there is a public comment at this time. We will move on to item 15. George?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On March 13th, we declared a local emergency as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. As required under our municipal code, that proclamation from March 13th has to be ratified by the council via resolution. That's what this resolution does. And then this will return to the council at every subsequent council meeting for further validation that it's a continuing emergency until that concludes. So you'll see this at a regular meeting as we go again in April, as so long as the COVID-19 emergency is continuing. The resolution itself doesn't do anything other than ratify my additional proclamation and then authorize the further actions under the proclamation of emergency. But what I do have a question for the council as part of this resolutions of adoption is you saw the basic changes to the town's operations and you saw the shelter-in-place order from the county and in fact, growing number of counties throughout the Bay Area. And one of the issues of concern that's arisen has been interpretations of that order and how it relates to basic essential services, what those basic essential services are. One issue that's come up is landscaping service. It's not specifically mentioned within that order. So some feedback on that would be appropriate and how we want to address that locally as part of this emergency resolution. And then the second component of that is that we, at the, at the county level with the order, provided that housing construction would still be allowed to continue. So many jurisdictions are continuing housing in the community. And I can go down a list of those and the various actions that each are taken as we go forward with this conversation. But it's how we want to implement that locally. So I'll stop there and ask for some initial questions from the council if there's any on this resolution before I start to go into any further detail on the housing issue that I'm looking for some feedback on.
Okay, initial questions to the city manager and I see Bill has Okay, uh, initial questions, uh, to the city manager and I see Bill has his hand up. Bill, you can go ahead. Do you have a question or do you have a comment?
Uh, it was a comment, so I'll just hold off.
Okay, no problem. Anybody, uh, I have a question, George. So we have before us the declaration of a local emergency, uh, and to ratify that uh, declaration that you previously made. And there are, uh, some issues that are related to the, uh, county medical officer's order and, and particularly interpretations of what is essential and what is non-essential. Those seem like separate but related items to me. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to do, I'm, I'm happy to take it either way to approve or, or to, you know, put before the council approving the local emergency and then take questions or to consider issues that, uh, are related to the repercussions uh, that, you know, of, of this whole virus and the responses, but not directly frankly related to whether or not we're issuing and ratifying the local emergency. You have a preference?
Uh, well, you mean in terms of adopting the resolution first and then having me continue on the other two items?
Well, I think there's some discussion that, uh, council members want to have regarding the implications, uh, of the emergency. So maybe we should take those before we actually do the adoption.
Okay.
So let me first ask if there's any public comment on this item. There's any public comment, if you could either raise your hand on the screen or send a text or email to Anthony so that he can notify us that you have a comment.
Presently, I have, I have none.
Okay, uh, I certainly we. Okay, we, we received comments, uh, in the earlier public comment period where, which we didn't respond to, but they addressed uh, the particular issue that staff has asked for feedback on. So, uh, not seeing public comment from the uh, public, uh, I'll recognize Councilmember Widmer.
Okay, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Uh, I was on the call, actually I've been on all the calls with county and, um, and I was there when we talked about the construction. And the county manager specifically tied it to affordable housing. That we have a homeless and a housing issue here, and so his recommendation was that we continue on with, with the construction of those items. Now, I don't believe any of the housing activities. I could be wrong. Some, if people are building an ADU as some of these communities have said back in Georgia's thing, and they're building an ADU, uh, yeah, I agree, we should probably allow that to go forward. But to build a house that's going to take three to five years, uh, and that will not be used for affordable housing, I think really is, uh, is inappropriate, especially with, with the, with the emergency order issued, not, not only here in the city or in the town, but, uh, also in the county as well as in the whole state. You know, we're not going to get ahead of this thing. I agree with the comments that are, that were made in the, in the emails. Um, and, and I agree with that we should probably take a look at, uh, curtailing, uh, landscape because it's the same thing. Um, you know, if we're really trying to shut down this, uh, this, uh, spread of this virus, then I, then I think that we need to, to follow the rules that were, that have been laid out after some careful thought by our medical doctors. And so, um, so I'm, I'm not, I'm in favor of, uh, an ADU, I can see that happening and buttoning up any existing equipment, but I, no, no other type of construction. And I think we should take seriously whether or not we want to curtail, uh, landscape. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Lampres?
Yeah, a, a couple of thoughts. One, if, if we do, um, prohibit work on, on construction, I presume that would include the civic center, just to be clear. And just to be, be aware of that, and I think that's, um, probably the right place to, to end up. Uh, my, my overarching point though is, is I think we need to do a, a better job of giving guidance to people about what is and is not permitted and then having some way to enforce it, because I have no idea how we enforce this stuff. Um, and I would love to hear other people's thoughts on that.
Yeah.
Uh, if, if I could jump in for a second, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, go. No problem.
So, um, the, the county's order, uh, subsequent conversations with county OES and their interpretation of that order in the six Bay Area counties plus the expanded counties that are now participating in the shelter in place order have expanded the interpretation of housing to include more than just affordable housing projects and homelessness housing. It now includes all housing of any size or shape. So that's market rate housing, affordable housing, or other types of housing. Those are all permissible under the order. Also, public works projects and, uh, public infrastructure projects and critical facilities such as, uh, you know, even libraries, police stations and city halls, those are all permissible projects under the order. Streets and roads and highways and drainage, those are all authorized to continue under the order. However, there are only a few jurisdictions out there, uh, that are actually limiting that even more. Uh, you know, most of the count, most of the cities in San Mateo County are allowing all residential construction to continue, but they are doing basic inspections only, uh, and they have a concern for their, for the health and safety of their workers as well as the health and safety of the constructed project. Most of them also all realize there is no real way for them to enforce the social distancing requirements on all of the construction sites. There's just no way for them to do that. There are three communities out there that are taking more restrictive measures. Hillsboro, residential construction is allowed to occur, but only to wrap up and seal up the project for the shutdown period. So over the next few days, even the next week, those projects are going to be allowed to continue, but they're going to continue in a way that the weatherproof them for the next couple of weeks. After that, no further work is allowed. Uh, and emergency permits are going to continue to be processed. So if your water heater goes out or your, uh, your gas goes out or something like that, you need that sort of permit, those would continue to be processed and, and inspected in the field and issued. Woodside is pretty much the same thing. Residential construction allowed only for wrap up and seal, emergency permits are processed. But that town has, has made it very clear they are not enforcing it. So they're, they're advertising it to the community, that's what the requirements are, but they are stepping away at that point and not enforcing it. Portola Valley, they're a little different. Uh, they have residential construction allowed only to wrap up for the shutdown. Once it's done, no further work required. Emergency permits are issued and they're even allowing those projects in order to speed up those seal up processes. Allow them to occur on Saturdays and Sundays to finish up and shut them down. The town expects that there's going to be exceptions to be made to that. So if somebody's got a a construction loan issue or a concrete pour or some waterproofing that they need to finish up, the building official in that community is tasked with working out those issues and the expectation is that the work would cease within a certain period of time. But those are the only three communities that I'm aware of in San Mateo County that are going to be stopping all residential construction. All the rest are going to allow it with limitations related to types of inspections, the staffing issues and ramping up and ramping down that process, whether they can even do electronic permitting. Uh, and so limiting public contact. All of them have real huge concerns about the social distancing issues and how they're even going to manage that moving forward. Uh, that concludes my additional feedback on that item.
Uh, so let, let me add a couple of things to what George just said. Both George and I have been very involved, both at the county level and with residents on this issue. And, um, I'll just point out that section ten C of the order says that in the definition of what is a central infrastructure, it says including but not limited to, among other things, construction of housing. And then it says in parentheses, in particular, affordable housing or housing for individuals experiencing homelessness. So the way that it's stated is construction of housing focusing in particular on a couple of different issues, but it's a general construction of housing statement. And immediately after this was issued, um, Atherton, really with George's leadership, went through an assessment and thought that that would not include residential housing in Atherton. And we issued a notice or we began to issue a notice to construction firms to that extent. It then became, and we raised that in the county, both at George's level and, and at mine. And there was considerable discussion throughout the county. And the conclusion of the six counties, and now it's more than six, was that construction of housing would be interpreted generally as construction of any housing and that it wouldn't be limited to the particulars that the medical officer pointed out. Um, notwithstanding that, local jurisdictions, it, it's my understanding, and George, correct me if I'm inaccurate, but it's my understanding to have the ability to have, uh, more restrictive, um, orders than, than are, uh, specified in the medical officer's order. And that's why Portola Valley, Woodside and Hillsboro have issued their orders. So if we as a council wish to be more restrictive than the medical officer's order, we can. But we, I just want everyone to be aware that the interpretation of the medical officer's order by the six counties that initially supported this order and had it issued from each of their medical officers was the construction of housing would cover all construction of housing. With respect to landscaping, that's kind of a different issue. And I, I suggest that we take them up separately. I do think that Bill's comment that, or, or Mike's, I'm not sure who made it, but that we need to provide some guidance to our residents is the right thing. Uh, and, uh, again, I, I've had a considerable amount of discussion both with residents and, and George on this. Uh, there are, you know, we see, uh, gardening firms, uh, continuing their work at homes and, and whether, I, I think we, George has concluded, so Atherton has concluded that gardening is not part of the essential infrastructure protection unless there's, you know, a water leak or some other, or, or a tree, a dead tree or removal issue. Uh, but in general, gardening is not included in the essential services. And the other issue that's come up, just so everybody knows, is house cleaning. And we've determined that house cleaning is considered an essential service because it helps with, uh, what is, uh, in ten F, uh, nine, which is.
considers house cleaning to be an essential service, landscaping not.
Right, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
So Rick, if we, if we could take them one at a time, I, I'm curious as to why housing construction is considered, you know, so special that it gets an exemption or an exception from this. What, what's the reasoning? Do you know?
George can.
So a lot of that reasoning, uh, revolved around, uh, wanting to keep people employed. There was that concern that if, if they could continue to work, they should. Uh, there was another rationale around, um, that all housing is good for the, for the general community to ensure that. And there was a lot of discussion around new housing versus a remodel. Someone remodeling or adding a wing to their house, the initial conversation was no, that's, that's not allowed. But if you're building a new house, then sure, that's allowed. We want that sort of production, housing production to continue in the county. The, the thought around the, the harm to potential social distancing issues and inspections and all that sort of stuff, that, that was sort of secondary to the conversation. It was, it was more, you know, we need to get people employed. We don't know what's going to happen at the federal level with respect to people's wages and, and how they're going to continue to survive and things like that.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that apply to everything?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. And that was, that was one of, you know, my issues that I kept raising during this conversation is you open the floodgates of, you know, everything's going to be constructed and you could do that. You, you might as well, you just undermine the entire shelter in place order. Because you're, you're going to have, you know, people working on houses, you're going to have people out and about, you're going to have food trucks running around, you're going to have landscapers on all the homes. It's, it's, it's just, it just undermines it entirely from my perspective. And I, I raised that issue at the county level. And that's kind of what started some of this conversation in, in San Mateo, anyway.
Um, can I ask a question here, just, uh, under the construction component?
No problem. We're, we're focusing on the construction piece. We'll go to the other two later. So let, let's just air this one out fully. Go ahead, Kerry.
Well, that's, that, uh, so, um, uh, just a construction component. I mean, we obviously in Atherton deal with large homes and the degree of separation between the people that work on these sites is typically, you know, pretty great. You know, if you've got a fifteen thousand square foot house, these guys are pretty much separated pretty well. Is there any way to implement or direct, um, the general contractor to, uh, you know, it's kind of the same way they do it in the private side of it, component, some degree of, you know, that safety separation? Or in the case that I've been dealing with a lot of construction sites over the last few days and contractors have taken the initiative to, or guidance to actually per, go as a check-in, because, you know, we have got large sites that are all typically gated off. Um, and actually checking the employees in, that they go through a, basically a check screening questionnaire, self-screening. General contractor is asking the questions related to, have you been six, you know, all the criteria that, you know, would lead them to believe that somebody should not be on the site. And if anybody is, they're not allowed on the site. Kind of that self-policing component. But I do have some comment, questions related to the bathroom facilities. And maybe that is something else that, you know, an additional measure if this construction sites are allowed to proceed. I still think a precautionary measure as far as cleanliness, so getting some quest, some, um, direction to the general contractors that are working these sites to get people to provide some degree of cleanliness to those bathrooms, because contractors tend not to be the safest, because that's usually a a pot out in the middle of a field somewhere. But I think that more direction on keeping those things safe. Can we implement something like that in a process if we're going to allow construction sites even under the county standard C to stay open?
Uh, we, well, we certainly could, but then it all comes down to sending our staff out to these construction sites to validate they have those precautionary measures to, to, to inspect them and to enforce that they're actually doing it. And frankly, I'm not willing to put our staff in that position.
Sure, sure. Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, I didn't know.
The other thing.
I didn't know. Okay, apologize. No, no, go.
I, I was going to say, the other thing is, is that, you know, the incubation period on this disease is, is quite extensive, okay? And so you may say, no, I feel great. And you may feel great for a couple of days, but you can be infecting other people from what I understand from listening to all the different briefings, is that you can be, you can be infected and, and carry the disease to others before you actually are showing symptoms. And that's, that's the issue. That's why the schools all shut down.
Okay. I, I just want to say, I think it's a difficult issue. I mean, to shut these sites down. Um, I mean, we could take the position that Woodside and Hillsboro have taken to allow them to wrap up, but then during the, uh, uh, you know, shelter in place order uh, to not allow construction because of, uh, concern about the spread of the virus. Uh, I, I do think there is an option to require. I do think there is an option to require the contractors to practice social distancing and to insist that they clean the bathrooms. I think that's an extremely valid issue. But I don't think that we're going to attempt to enforce that. So, you know, the issue is, how serious do we want to make it that we're going to stop this activity? There is some social distancing, but there's also a large number of people on these sites, and there's some, you know, a possibility of spreading the virus, because you've just got a bunch of people together. And I think we need to decide what we want to do on it.
I think it's a tough call. I agree, it's a tough call. I think Councilmember Lewis has her hand up, I'm sorry, I interjected here, but Portola Valley is, Portola Valley is solution of allowing them to wrap up, working through a period of time to do that, and, you know, dealing with some of those exceptions on a case-by-case basis to allow them to finish up might take them a little longer. If you're looking for a way to do that, I think Portola Valley's is probably your best solution. Woodside's preventing it from happening, telling them to wrap up, but then just looking the other way and not enforcing it at all. And part of that challenge is, it's the sheriff that serves in Portola Valley and Woodside, and in one part of the county, they allow it, and the other part is not. So, it's hard, and I get that, but we don't want to do that either. So, somewhere between Hillsborough and Portola Valley, I think would be a reasonable solution for our town. And go from there. And one last point there, Mike Greenley, the building officials here, and he can address any questions the council might have with respect to particular building department policies and issues.
Hey, Elizabeth, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm, my question is, a couple of questions, is how many projects do we have ongoing at this moment? And how many, do we have a sense of how many workers are coming into our community from outside on a daily basis? I think that's the big concern. We are small, pretty much isolated, in a sense, community. And when we are bringing in to our community, even like the landscapers and the, then their construction workers, a lot more people into, that are driving through, that are walking, biking, and coming into these large construction projects. And many of them are similar to commercial buildings. Some of the homes that are being constructed now are similar to commercial buildings. I'm not opposed to the buildings being, the homes being built, because they are being built per the building codes, but they are quite large and they are, they need a lot of construction workers on site at any one time. And if elsewhere in the counties, we are stopping a commercial building, unless you're building for an essential service, such as a police department, or a library, or, you know, a medical building, you have to stop construction. So, it is a double-edged sword here, because this one size does not fit all, and I don't think it fits the community that we're in with the extra-large homes that are, single-family homes, and the residents building these homes are able to live elsewhere while they're being built. And a interruption in the shelter-in-place for this timeframe, which is really now only about another two weeks, or maybe two and a half weeks, would not be that big of an imposition. Does that make sense?
Mayor, perhaps we could have Mike Greenley and/or Lisa's here as well, provide any comments or feedback. Anthony, could you unmute the two of them?
Doing that now. Mike, you're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Can.
Yes.
And Lisa's ready too.
Thank you.
Okay, so you can't hear me, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, so, Elizabeth, some of the numbers, right now, we have probably close to 1,100 open permits, probably anywhere from 25 to 30 full-site developments going on right now, as far as the construction part of it.
And that, Mike, the numbers of workers that come to each particular site, it's going to vary based on where they are in the particular phase of construction, right?
That's correct, George. The workers come from all over the place. I mean, they come from down in the valley, and, I mean, yeah, they're definitely spread out. They come from all over. That's correct.
Mike, I'm sorry, could you explain the term you use? We have open permits, we have 1,100 open permits? How does that relate to the number of construction projects that are actually being-
I mean, these permits can be anything from alterations, remodels, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, it's just all the permits that we have open that have not been final yet. A lot of these, a lot of these big projects have multiple permits. So, a lot of these projects can have up to 10, 11, 12 permits on each project.
Do you have an estimate for how many properties would actually have somebody physically working today?
Today, I think there was a few. I think PPG up on Walsh, I'm going by what my inspector, Adam, that, you know, driving around and that. I mean, we haven't done any inspections, and if we do, and if it does happen, then we, excuse me?
Mike, I think what we're more looking for is if we open the gates and let all of these projects continue to work, how many sites would actually be under some sort of construction?
That's a hard one to estimate. I think, I think most of your big construction site, your full-site developments would probably try to operate. That's my opinion. But maybe a lot of these construction companies have pretty tight restrictions too, that I'm not really sure. But I think, I don't think all of them will by far, but you're going to have construction going on out there. And my concern would be, and I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, wrap it up and get it waterproof and that, but another big concern I would have would be the safety of how the site is left. I mean, open trenches, you got basements, you got rebar, you know, and then, not just to the public, that kids or somebody might get in there. And I know it's been quite a few times, Atherton PD gets called out, and they go out on these sites, and they're dark, and you got open light wells, and you got a 12 to 14-foot drop, and so my concern would be also the life and safety part of it, besides just wrapping it up. I think they should be, you know, do it, they should make it as safe as possible before they're shut down.
Mike, isn't it also, you know, true that you, we can have 1,100 permits, and some of those permits are basically kept open because some people just don't want reassessment, or it's just an ongoing thing? It's not really an active site, because we've had one on Walsh, the Tong home, that was literally open for 30 years plus. So, but that would be considered an open permit?
Well, that, yeah, that's correct. I'm saying, we're not out there doing 1,100 different types of property inspections, so I'm saying, you know, probably three or 400 of them belong just to full-site development.
Yeah.
You know? And the other ones, like I said, are just miscellaneous, and you're correct, that haven't been finalized, they haven't finalized them, and, you know, like I said, we try to keep up on that, but that's probably what a lot of them are.
A question again, I'm trying to get a handle on, if we said stop construction today, how many, approximately, how many sites would be affected that are actually out there constructing and would have to stop what they are doing? I mean, is it 10, is it a-
Let me see, I think I got about, I got about 10 emails from different contractors doing the full site, that's from talking about that they are working, and that if something is to change again, they just like a heads up, you know, that it's going to happen, so they can do like what we're discussing now, is wrap their sites up and make them safe and, you know, before they have to shut down. So, I'm not, you know, I can't tell you, I've been working remotely, and I know my, the inspectors there did drive around the first day when the sites weren't supposed to work, and then it changed, so I'm not sure exactly how many sites were under construction. I can definitely get a number, though. You know, if it's, if this goes into a third tomorrow, see how many sites, try to get a decent number, with how many sites are out there working.
There's also a security concern, in my opinion, when notice gets given, that there's still a lot of material items that are left on sites, which become opportunist time to take advantage of.
Yeah, it would trigger a lot of enforcement by the PD in terms of knowing where those primary sites are, so there's nobody stealing copper wire and things like that. Why don't we hand it back over to the mayor, so he can start managing the rest of the conversation?
Let me give a comment, and then Elizabeth has a comment. Mike, I have two questions that are, you know, obviously, our concern here is with a large number of people being on a site, the increased likelihood of spreading the virus, because either there's things that they're going to touch that aren't clean, that, we know the plastic and metal surfaces hold this virus for up to 96 hours, and that's a real risk, especially with the restrooms. But it could be on anything that they're working with that, you know, can transmit the virus. And so, one question is, is there, do you think there's any way to kind of distinguish between those construction activities where there's a large number of people, where there's a greater risk, and those where there's a lesser number? That's my first question. And a totally different question is for you to assess the risk to our staff who are going to be doing inspections, where we really don't want to present people in a situation where they may be getting this virus because they're put into an untenable situation.
Yeah, you were breaking up on the first question, Mayor, so let me go ahead and I'll jump to the second one. Yeah, with our staff, very concerned about them going out in the field and doing inspections. And, you know, so like I said, we're actually, if inspection were going to start, they're going to start next week. So, that's the only thing we're doing, you know, are they critical? And the social distance part, you know, that we're very concerned about that. You know, like I said, if they happen to have to go in a house and do a frame, you know, is have everybody be removed from the house, and he does the inspection in there by himself, to make no contact and keep away from everybody. But that's just, that's part of it. I mean, it sounds easy, sounds good, but, you know, who knows?
Yeah. Mike, the mayor's first question was, Mike, the mayor's first question is, is there a way to discern between sites that have a higher risk of numbers of workers being there, and there's a higher threshold of risk versus those construction projects where there's a lower risk?
No, not in my opinion, I don't see how we could justify that, or no. I mean, yeah, that's a good question, but I don't, I don't even know how to answer that one. I mean, it-
I apologize. Can we limit the number of contractors or subcontractors on a site?
Oh, sure, I think so. And I thought that was one of the directions we were going, have a limitation, you know, if that was the case of construction was continuous, limit how many subs can be on site. I mean, I think at this point, we can be more restrictive of what's out there. I mean, if that's one of our things that, hey, you don't have 10 people on site, you know, or whatever. But yeah, I think that could happen, my opinion.
Elizabeth wants to make a comment, and then Bill.
Thank you, Mayor DeGoya. So, the compliance or, the last line of compliance enforcement is our police department. And God bless our men and women in our police force who are going to continue working and protecting our town, and roaming the streets and putting themselves out there. But I, one of the other things I wanted to say, that the mayor already brought up, was our real concern has to be for the health and safety of our employees, our staff, our building inspectors, planners, those types of people that would have to go out and do these inspections. The, and I just really believe that you can't have different rules for different levels of, you know, construction work that's going on. We have to have a policy here that covers everything in Atherton. I mean, I really believe that these large construction projects, I know what happens in them, because I've gone through it, and, you know, it's chaos, it's organized chaos, but it is chaos, and there's, you know, people running all over, and there's a lot of chance for, you know, contamination, you know? And these are big projects, and I just feel that we're different from the rest of the area here in building affordable residences or other single-family homes. So, I would be inclined to put some restrictions on the projects that they have the rest of this week, tomorrow, Friday, to button everything up, maybe even allow them Saturday to button things up, but for then the next couple of weeks until the shelter-in-place is lifted, that we just shut everything down.
Okay, Bill? Yeah, so, there was the comment earlier, I think Carrie brought it up with regards to, we just let certain trades come in, but those trades are working on the same thing, and when there's something heavy, two people are going to be touching the same pieces of material and things like that. So, I just don't see limiting it to trades, you know, is, you know, just saying one trade at a time or something like that is appropriate. I agree with the vice mayor, and as we've said, and I said it from the very beginning, I think what some of our sister cities, more cities that are closer to where we are, Woodside, Portola Valley, Hillsborough, telling people, button it up, you got a couple, two or three days to do it, and then no more activity in the construction sites, I think is the appropriate and the safe thing to do for everybody, not just our residents, but also for those construction teams. And their companies and the federal government need to manage, you know, how they're going to take care of them. I think we're all in that same type of, you know, everybody's in that same type of boat, you know, housekeepers, et cetera. So, you know, everybody's making a personal choice. Do you tell your housekeeper not to come, but, or do you just pay the housekeeper for not coming, you know, or tell them to come? So, you have to make those choices what's right for you, but, but I think that these large, all the construction sites need to go. You know, if somebody's water heater comes out, I think there needs to be, I take George's input on that, but I would think if a water heater goes out and there's no additional hot water- I take George's input on that, but I would think if a water heater goes out and there's no additional hot water, to, to address that, this would be an emergency type situation. But other than that, I think we should stop the construction is my two cents. Thank you.
Can I, Mike again, can I comment real quick?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so back to the numbers, Adam's actually listening to this, to this meeting too. Forty active sites with workers is what, that what we got as, as probably today, I would think. So thank you, Adam, for that info. Yeah, and then also, Bill, you brought up the emergency permit, so yeah, we have it set up that all the requests for emergency permit type situations, the emails go directly to me. And I evaluate them, look at them, I have them send me the application through the mail or excuse me, through email. I received one today for a collapsed sewer line. So got the application and they could actually start work without permit in hand. The building code does allow that for emergency situations. And then we'll have them, they can actually drop the check off into our Dropbox that way. So that's, we're trying to, you know, like I said, I had one today, so it's the first one I had to deal with as far as emergency permits. We got those covered.
Thanks, Mike. Let me make a couple of comments. So I think that our biggest concern here should be protecting our employees and reducing the likelihood of the spread of this virus where there are a good number of employees who are working on these construction sites. And I, I think this is a very hard issue because we're basically making a decision to deny people their livelihood. But it, but it is part of this process. I do think that there are issues that we can distinguish. And I don't think I can think of all of them, but the obvious one is an emergency which George brought up where you have a water heater or a sewer go out or there's an electrical problem. Those should all be authorized and I think they're defined as essential services. I also think that there's situations where you've got one or two people that are doing a remodel on a bathroom or a kitchen in somebody's home where they need, you know, I mean, you know, these, these situations can be all over the map. They can be two months away or they can be three days away. And we need to have some flexibility so that where there isn't the risk of, or the high risk of spreading this virus that, that we enable some accommodation and we could authorize that at the building department level just to make that judgment. But in my opinion, where there's a bathroom or a kitchen remodel, it's totally different situation than where you're constructing a residence, you have 20 or 25 people on site. And I, I think we should allow that to continue. I think that's why the medical officer carved out housing construction. Or that's part of why. I, I also think we have a problem with housing in the county and, and they, I mean, Redwood City and Menlo Park have got to be dealing with large numbers of people on these large sites because there's got to be a risk of spreading the virus. And just like Carrie said, there's plenty of things on these sites that aren't clean, aren't clean and they're not going around with sanitizer. So that's just not our problem. But I guess I, I come down close to where Bill and, and Elizabeth are. Maybe some, I mean, I'd like to understand a little bit more about exactly what Hillsborough did, how that's different from what Portola Valley's done. But I, I think it's probably appropriate for us to do something here. And, and I just note that the public comment that we've received, both at this meeting and I've received many emails over the last three or four days about, they've all been on this issue.
Mayor, there, there isn't very much distinction between Hillsborough and Portola Valley. Portola Valley is just defined a little more and they were going to let people work on Sundays and Saturdays. And they tasked the building official, city manager, community development director with making the decisions on those special exceptions. All agencies recognize that if it's an emergency, that they're going to get that sort of a permit. That's not a problem and they'll process that as best they can and as quick as they can, obeying the social distancing requirements.
Okay, Carrie?
If I, yeah, if I could. I, I agree that, you know, we've got to, you know, take a very hard look at this, but I don't think it's as simple as just, you know, transitioning because transitioning also means that tomorrow we should be implementing, you know, some direction to the contractors, even in the transition period, kind of a guide because, you know, they're shut off to the outside world, they're on a construction site. They're not paying as close of attention as staff is related to, you know, having to make the sites clean or whatever measures it would be to make even the people that are transitioning safe, right? I still think that we should kind of have a guide or a protocol that contractors can utilize even in this transition period. I don't care if it's for one, two or three days, you know, informing them they need to take measures and steps even in this transitions, the area, transition time, to make sure that one, nobody that on that site is high risk when they enter that site. Two, that the bathrooms are to be, and I know they're not necessarily the clean people, but like a big parent, you have to tell them, you need to direct your people, somebody on your staff to make sure the facilities in this transition period are clean and safe, period. And then I think that there's got to be something that comes into play here where they take measures to make sure that when that site is vacated, that there are security measures put into play because we've had problems on these construction sites. And we're going to go into better weather, even if it isn't even for the next week. But if it gets extended, I think that's another conversation that we have to have. But again, bad guys know what we do. We make this information public. And we already have had an outcry related to safety measures on all of our, throughout the town. Just opening up because there's hundreds of thousands of dollars in site, equipment, tools, fixtures and so on and so forth, copper, that's going to be just prime rich and we only have how many officers to cover, you know, as, you know, 35 to 40 sites. So, you know, not that simple, but I think that other, other concerns have to be put into play and just not step away and say, okay, you know, transition period and safety of staff is paramount. So if Mike has to implement, you know, or say that, you know, I don't want anybody on the site when I'm, you know, my inspectors are even finalizing these things or whatever he has to do to make sure staff's safe, I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, so George, what do you need on this?
Just looking for some consensus. I think where that's going, and I, I noticed that Councilmember Lewis has a comment. I think the consensus is running to the Portola Valley model with some exceptions as we can make them as they shut down to give them the time to do that. And if there's any special specific situations, let the building official and staff deal with that. And then of course, do the emergency permits as, as Mike already talked about. If that's where the consensus is, that's all I need.
Okay, Elizabeth? Say something.
Just real quickly, just real quickly, following up on Carrie's comments about the exposure to crime on all these sites once you kind of vacate them. Is there an opportunity here for the contractors, the guys running the jobs to hire security guards for this period of time to be there 24/7? On like a, you know, three, an eight hour shift around the clock? Do we have that capability to enforce them to do that or, or suggest that they do that and allow them to do that? Can we allow them to do that?
We can certainly suggest that they do that and allow them to do that. What we don't allow is for someone to sleep on the job site.
Well, there's those security guards, just get
If they do like eight hour shifts, I mean, there are people that do an eight hour night shift.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is Mona. We cannot require them to do that. Understand, understand.
Mike has a comment?
Yeah, I just haven't had a chance to, to talk this one through and I'd like to. My, my first thought is, this is a, in many ways, a really terrible thing to do because we are costing, you know, people income and it's, it's rough. People are looking to lose jobs and, you know, it's rough. And as a result, I think we should make sure that we reconsider this constantly. And as soon as it's safe that we, we lift it and do what we can to try to, you know, mitigate the economic harm that we're causing through this. The, the other thought I have is I think speed is actually very important. And I think we should move very quickly and I don't know, Elizabeth talked about two or three days and I think that seems reasonable to me, but I wouldn't want to go too much farther because we're in a special period now where to flatten the curve, it requires big action quickly. You know, so that's, you know, for me, rather than spending any time figuring out special rules people need to follow or anything else, I would, I would, I would put my, I would say, let's get it done quickly. And then there's two other issues that I'd, I'd like us to discuss as part of this. One is the town center construction and two, again, is enforcement. I really want to understand that and I guess communication and enforcement. And Mr. Mayor, I'll turn to you, you know, whenever you want to discuss those, I'll defer to you.
We've dealt with these other issues, but I think the town center is a construction project and it's appropriate to consider it now.
Well, before you move on to that one, Mike mentioned speed of shutting these sites down. And you might note in Portola Valley's model, they allowed them to work Saturday and Sunday. Are there any thoughts on the council for that?
I would agree for Saturday, but not Sunday.
And what what is the purpose for working Saturday? Is this to get it wrapped up quickly?
Correct.
So you have, so, so you have Thursday, Friday and Saturday and then next week it's shuttered. I just want, I just wanted to make one, one comment real quickly about what Mike was saying about the economic impact on these workers. I truly understand that. I've spent all afternoon on conference calls with our office back in Santa Clara and our husband, my husband, and talking through how we are going to deal with our 100 employees. Okay, so it's, it's not, it's not an easy thing. It's not easy to do. There is in the act, the congressional senate approved act, unemployment insurance that can kick in right away without a waiting time. And so if any of these guys have, you know, unemployment insurance coming to them, which they should have if they're legal workers through legal contractors, then they can go file for unemployment insurance right away.
Yeah, so the other thing, I think, George, with regards to allowing Saturday and or Sunday, I think Saturday is probably appropriate, but it has to have a deadline. So, you know, as we mentioned, yeah, you can work Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And then Saturday, you're done. There's no work period after Saturday night at 5 o'clock.
Well, I think that's going to largely depend on the construction site and what the current phase of that construction is. Mike might be able to comment further, but we'll have to work with each particular site to make sure that that site is made safe in the timely
But if they're taking two weeks to do it, then they can't work on Saturday. I mean,
That's not the expectation.
Well, I, I just feel that we, you know, there needs to be some reasonableness, okay? So we're, we're imposing on the neighbors at that time. And, you know, they're listening to it now every day when they're sitting there in their homes locked in. And, and to say you can, you close it up as fast as you can, fine, but we need to give them a deadline. It's got to be done by that time and no new construction and there'll not be any inspections at that time. So, you know, I understand, I understand you're saying it's, you know, a big site might take a little bit longer than they need to pull whatever, whatever act, you know, whatever resources they need to wrap it up in three or four or five days, whatever it's going to be that we agree.
Well, I, I think that different sites are going to have different requirements. I, I'm not sure what the benefit is of having them work on Saturday. If we're going to say, wrap it up and take the time you need to wrap it up. And it could be, you know, it's going to be different for different sites. I, I don't see the benefit of having them work on Saturday. I'd prefer not to inconvenience the neighbors with that exception. I think it's a different situation than on the town construction site where we did poll the neighbors and they all supported construction on the weekend because they wanted to get that job done. I'm not sure that's true in the neighborhoods where they see these
Rick, I think when I talked about speed, the reason had nothing to do with the neighbor's convenience. It rather had to do with the fact that we're dealing with a, a very infectious virus. Right. Every day we delay. It's, you know, increases exponentially. And so there is a difference between closing up on Saturday versus closing up on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And my understanding is the, these first, these next couple of weeks are critical weeks that we're really trying to, you know, do what we can to tamp this down. That's, that's my theory. And I'm obviously not an infectious disease expert.
Yeah, but you, that, but, but the conclusion in terms of getting there quicker is to support the work on Saturday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bill has his hand up.
Yeah, I was just saying, if we're going to work on Saturday, we should, we should close it up. And, and I know some of the sites are very, very large, as you pointed out. But, but, you know, they need to prioritize what they need to close up for safety purposes. And, you know, it can't be, if, if you're going to say it's going to, you know, continue on for another week, you know, then there's going to be, I would expect that some people are going to continue to try and, you know, move further along on their project to make another milestone or make another deliverable. You know, so I think we just need to wrap it up as fast as we can and, and, and be done with it. That's similar to Mike.
I personally
Yeah, if it includes Saturday, fine. I'm, I'm not interested in Sunday.
Yeah, yeah, I, I personally agree with that. And I think that staff and Mike and the inspectors will have intimate detail of what's going on. So it's really hard to bofala an inspector.
Right. We can take it from there.
Yeah, I think this, Mike, yeah, I think they could, you know, that's the direction we're going. Thursday, Friday, and I would agree, I think Saturday, that, that should give them and like, Bill should need to prioritize on what they need to get wrapped up and, and make the project as safe as they can within those three days.
Yeah.
All right, got it.
Okay. Okay. George, I think you've, you've heard that. Why don't we? Well, there hasn't been any discussion on the town center project. I don't know if anyone has a comment.
So just in general, the, the health order though allows public works projects to continue. So in the consent agenda, you just authorized a street road project, a slurry seal project, that sort of thing. So that is expected to begin sometime in April, probably after April 7th. The town center project, it was also as a critical facility specifically kind of exempted under the health orders, understanding amongst all the Bay Area counties. So that's, but this is a town project, so pleasure of the council.
And I think I was the one who brought this up, so if I can, Mike, my perspective is I think we're saying there's a, a health emergency and we're imposing a real cost on workers and, and other, you know, the people
workers and, and other, you know, the people, the homeowners who are paying for it and everything else. And, and I think that we should be willing to take our own medicine. I hate to say it, it's going to be a difficult thing, but I think that if it's important enough for us to say, people shouldn't be able to build their own homes, I think it's important enough for us to say we shouldn't be building that town center because it's probably the biggest construction project in town. And, and I walked by it today and I can tell you that there were a number, it happened to be around lunchtime and there were a number of people, you know, leaning on each other and talking to each other and sharing cell phones, pictures and, I mean, absolutely touching each other in that, you know, in that scenario. So that, that's my perspective on it, that I would be inclined to say if this is, if we're requiring this for everybody else, we should probably be willing to accept it for ourselves.
Bill?
Yeah, I, I, I agree a hundred percent with, with what Mike said. I think that, uh, uh, you know, if we're requiring others, we should do it to ourselves. All, all town activities where they're potentially can get infected and which, you know, if they're working with one another, they can. So we need to do our best to protect the workers and the contractors that are in this town. Even if they choose to go to work, we need to do our best to make sure they're protected. We need to protect our employees and we need to protect our residents. So I think we should be stopping that type of work. That's what a stop works, you know, stay at home type of order means.
Is there other comment?
I'll comment.
Okay.
Um, so we're talking about stopping work until, uh, April 7th. But that date may be pushed forward. Uh, I mean, you know, onward. I think, um, as, I'm in agreement with Mike that, um, we need to show the residents and that we're doing, uh, what we can. It's, it's a different situation because it is the residents' money. And this will cost them a lot of money. However, we are in uncharted waters with the COVID-19, um, contagion. And if there's a possibility that by stopping this construction project, that we may, uh, prevent the spread coming into our town by the workers. Not to say that they are contagious, but possibly they are, you know, could be. We don't know, everybody's a possibility. I was in a doctor's office this afternoon and, uh, the med tech was doing a procedure and I said, so, have you been tested? I mean, you look pretty healthy. Do you know if you're not, uh, contagious? He said, no, I don't know if I'm contagious or not, you know? Because you could be perfectly healthy and be contagious. So it's a very frightening, frightening, frightening thing. But, um, I think at least until, uh, the April 7th, uh, uh, deadline, that it would behoove us to stop work.
Hey, Carrie?
Uh, I would agree, uh, I'm sorry, I, I probably have the most, I, I, I think I have a flip phone. The most challenges of the group here today. But I obviously don't like what Mike was saying and I was by there the other day in similar scenario. So I do think that in the interest of public safety in general, um, up until, you know, if we have to reconsider it, that's one thing. But, uh, I think if we're bearing it on our residents, uh, doing construction, that we should bear the same knife in the interest of public safety.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one, one other thing is, I, I'm not sure, I think we should bring this up every time we meet because there's going to be a lot of things that change. And it may be that the circumstances change sufficiently that we want to change our minds in some way. So I'd be hesitant to put an outside date on this at all.
I, I, uh, Mike, I, I just actually was communicating with Robert Abadia on that very issue. Our next meeting is April 15th. So what I'm presuming is that we'll be calling a special meeting of the city council on or before April 7th to reassess.
Agreed.
Yep.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think that the impact of it, uh, you know, there, there's a reason that the health officer said building police departments uh, is exempt, uh, even though those people that are working on those projects, and we know there's big projects in other cities, uh, on our borders, that, that the risk of, uh, infection and spreading the virus is grave. So I think there's a good rationale for this. I think that just like with the, um, with, with the private homes, there's, you know, the contractors lose their workers, they may not get them back. It presents huge risk for the project as well as for the workers. So we have to look at it every single opportunity that we have.
Uh, on the other, on the other side of that, uh, mayor, um, also if one person gets it, that whole site shut down anyways.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, um, so there are, so, uh, let's see, I, I got a, uh, text here from our city attorney, Mona, can you just clarify, do you, uh, should, do you believe we should take a roll call on the direction? We will take a roll call on the approval.
Yes, we'll need to take roll call on all of the items, but, um, there has been direction provided to the manager. So I would just say that the, the council member wishing to move this item should also make the motion, um, with the direction as, as provided in during tonight's meeting.
I think that, well, we've got a couple of other issues here regarding landscaping, gardening and house cleaning. Maybe we should take those up and then provide a comprehensive direction on the whole issue of what we're going to address.
That makes sense.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Also.
Go ahead, Mona.
Uh, I, I think that makes sense. And in addition, I think it would be beneficial if we just briefly summarize at the end of the discussion, the direction that we believe the council is providing to the manager on enforcement and town center project, Saturdays, um, residential projects and so forth.
Great, so what, why don't you do that as an interim summary right now, George? Because this has been a big topic.
So, so far it is to, um, stop all residential construction and instruct those construction projects to wrap up and seal up their site, to shut down. They can work on Saturday to accomplish that, but the building official will work with each site to urgently complete that effort. Uh, and then that also applies to the town center project. That should finish up as well and make that site safe. And we're going to ask or recommend or encourage each site to set up its own security system, whether that's a camera that they can purchase that rings over to the police department or whether that's an onsite security guard operating 24/7 with shifts, nobody sleeping onsite. Uh, and that, um, the building official will also work with the community for the issuance of any emergency permits that might be necessary out there for water heater, crushed sewer pipes, things like that. And we'll do that using social distancing protocols.
Okay.
Uh, to the mayor?
Uh, oh, yeah.
To the mayor, I would, I would just clarify, uh, George, just make sure this, through this Saturday. It's tomorrow, Friday and this Saturday, and by next week it will be shut down.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Agreed.
On the, uh, landscaping issue? I'm sorry, I'm going to start with the, send it to home, house cleaning issue. Sorry?
No.
So, so the, uh, health officer's order does provide, uh, an exception for, work related to, I'm sorry, I'm just reading it now for that section.
I think it's home care.
No, it's sanitation, it's, it's.
Sanitation, yeah.
It's, it's number F9.
F9, perfect, thank you. F9?
Yeah. Plumbers, electricians, exterminators, other service providers who provide services that are necessary for maintaining the safety, sanitation and essential operation of residents.
Right, that's been interpreted to include, uh, if you have a house cleaner who's cleaning your home, that's a sanitation kind of service that you use for the cleanliness of your home. We have, you know, 80, 70, 80, 90 year old, uh, residents who.
Yes.
Don't do that. We have, uh, uh, an infirm population that doesn't do that, so they have assistance in providing that. So that was a specific exception, uh, within this particular section of the code for that sort of service. Landscaping is not addressed anywhere within this particular health order. So my interpretation of landscaping is it wasn't an essential service and that's what we've been communicating to the community with the exception of initial, uh, incorrect communication. But it's a not essential service, uh, unless it's related to a tree da, a tree down or, uh, an irrigation system that's gone awry or something like that, a leak that's flooding the property.
Okay, Bill, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, so, um, I think that, uh, you know, homekeeping is a, a decision that people have to make on their own, whether they stop it or whether they just pay their homekeeper or maid to, to not come or, or have them come and try and keep a distance. So I think that, you know, we should continue to allow that. The landscaping, I, I agree with the interpretation. It's, it's not an essential service. And, uh, and we should be clear that that's, that's not permitted.
I agree.
Ditto.
Just to be clear with regard to, I agree with that, but I want to try to understand what George said. You were talking about with house cle, house cleaning, you made reference to seniors and others. I, I think it applies across the board to everybody. Is that right?
Yeah. That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with that.
I think it's an important task.
This is Mona, I just wanted to add, um, I, that's, that's congruent with my legal interpretation as prohibiting, um, landscaping as not being a, um, essential service. But I also wanted to highlight section 10A2 as the basis for house cleaning, particularly, um, the last two lines of that section.
Yep.
Can you read those to us, please?
Yes, it says that to obtain, uh, essential activities include, uh, to obtain necessary services or supplies for themselves and their family or household members or to deliver those services or supplies to others such as by way of example only and without limitation, canned food, dry goods, fresh fruits and vegetables, pet supply, fresh meat, fish and poultry and any other household consumer products and products necessary to maintain the safety, sanitation and essential operation of residences.
So why, why wouldn't it include sanitation?
I believe that it does. I believe that, um, food delivery and sanitation.
I think we're all in agreement.
Okay.
I think we're all in agreement.
All right, great, great.
Okay.
I just want to.
So we can.
Let me make a comment. I just want to point out that, you know, it, it would be good for there to be a way for residents to be able to, uh, contact, probably you, George, but somebody who, if they feel like they have an exception, they could obtain an exception. And I'll, I'll give a couple of examples which I think are appropriate. I, I, before I mentioned, uh, somebody remodeling their kitchen or bathroom. If somebody's got one person coming in to remodel a kitchen or bathroom and they're. Seems onerous to me and, and not a risk of spreading the virus for letting them to continue that. A more, I mean, in this, this item that, uh, Mona just pointed out, there could easily be, uh, people who are using a gardener to, you know, provide them with, uh, fresh fruits and vegetables who are unable to take care of their property and somebody else is doing it for them. That person should be able to continue to come into the home just as a house cleaner does. Because they're, they're providing an essential service to that home. So there needs to be some way to enable an exception here.
Well, while I certainly understand that, I, and I'm certainly willing to take those phone calls and help, help residents through that analysis. I think this goes toward the next conversation we're having around this issue and that's enforcement.
Right.
Because there's, you, you walk around, even though we tell people landscapers are not allowed to be there, landscapers and service industry is going to show up and they're going to do their work. Some property owners aren't even home when it occurs. They may be out of town at another property and their homes are being cleaned and their landscape's being done. And we just don't have the resources and we're going to be down resources the, the longer this goes on to enforce those sorts of things. So, I, I, I think it's, it's incumbent upon us as, as staff to kind of help residents deal with that. But the expectation of us being out there clamping down and stopping things from occurring, even on a complaint basis, isn't realistic.
Right. Okay, Bill, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it is our responsibility though, George, to send something out to as many people who are on our email list as well as, uh, to identify there are some very large landscaping companies that do work here. We can notify them as we're going to do through our building department. You know, so I, I, I think that there's more that we can do than just say laissez faire, you know?
No, 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 that's not what I'm intenting. I'm just saying that if, if the expectation is that our police officers or our code enforcement officers are going to be out there shutting these things down and tracking them down, that's, that's not going to happen.
No, I, I agree with that, George, and I, I'm a hundred percent with you on that. However, I, I do also know, and as you and I have discussed several times, if the officer on patrol, routine patrol that isn't doing anything, he isn't chasing down anything and going on a specific call and he sees something going on, it wouldn't be a, a problem for him to stop and say, give a friendly hello and say, you know what? We've, we've eliminated that, so I prefer not to see you here again. Okay, I, I do think our police officers could do that. We pay them enough.
It, it's, it's not about pay, it's more about risk. And, and they can certainly make those stops and make those, uh, personal contacts. But the more that that occurs in the community, the more risk there is.
It's also, it's also different from our standard approach, which is to respond to complaints rather than to be proactive.
Well, these are not standard times, Mr. Mayor. These are not standard times, just look at the stock market. These are, these are, these are extraordinary times and I do think they could, they could talk to somebody through the speaker that's in their car. I've seen them also do that. Talk through the speaker in the car, not getting out of the car, telling people to slow down, stop, pull over, those type of things. So.
Oh, that can occur, yes.
I think that the, the, the chief is very creative and he and his team are, are excellent with what they do. And so I think that there's a way that we could possibly minimize, mitigate some of these things. That's all, and that's all I'll say about it.
To the mayor?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, uh, you know, by putting a flyer on a gardener's truck is kind of a way of informing and I think that'd be an easy way to, uh, to, if they're, they do pass a truck that's sitting out there that obviously has gardener equipment in. that obviously has gardener equipment and putting a flyer on it saying, hey, you know, this, you know, you have to take a hiatus, you know, would be an easy way to not necessarily, you know, have direct contact, but to get the message across.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, so now on this one, George, I would never want to pass a resolution that we had no intent to enforce. That just strikes me as not a good practice.
You're not.
No, that is what you just said, and I don't understand what the risk is exactly. What risk are you talking about?
Well, there could be three or four gardeners on a job site. You got a police officer who's getting out of his vehicle trying to track those individuals down on that job site, now making physical contact with those individuals in, you know, in a way that complies with the social distancing requirement and perhaps in English Spanish trying to communicate. Now there's going to be more physical, more closer contact to make sure the message is heard. It's a little, we have employees that feel that this situation is putting them at some extreme risk when they're doing public contact. Our police officers are the people on the street, our code enforcement officers, the person on the street that is making those contacts. And they are at risk every day, just stopping a car for speeding, running a stop sign, all that sort of stuff. That's a challenge. That's a stress, it's a challenge, and the less we have to do of that, the better. And I like the idea of the flyer, I like the idea of the speaker. All of those things we can do and we're going to do and we're going to make as much outreach as we can. But there's a lot of this stuff that we're just not going to have the resources to enforce. Not that we won't try, it's just we're not going to have the resources to do it.
Okay, I think it's a difference in tone. I heard you say something different and apologies if I misunderstood, but I think we should always have the intent to enforce something. And there's different levels of enforcement, different ways of enforcing everything else, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You know, if I can make a comment, I think that other jurisdictions have implemented a similar process, the PA system flyers, and I think that to enhance the process here, if one of our officers gets it, that means they're all gone. And so I think that that's the social distance issue. And so other jurisdictions have implemented something similar for this same scenario.
Correct, correct, and it's, and it's not. What I don't want to leave the community with is the expectation that our officers and our code enforcement officers are going to be patrolling the streets and making contact and shutting all these things down. We're going to do our best, but it's not going to work that way.
I think that's a different message than the message the Woodside gave.
Yes.
Okay, so is there more comment? You know, we've had a very lengthy discussion here on detailed issues regarding construction, landscaping, housekeeping, and enforcement. I think it's appropriate just to see if there happens to be any public comment of anyone who would like to make a comment. If there is, please indicate to Anthony and we'll recognize you.
This is, just for the record, I don't have any emails, texts, or.
Okay, no problem. Does anybody else have any comment?
Rick, I had wanted to raise the issue of outreach or education, whatever you want to call it, how we inform our residents, what's permitted and what's not. And there is bad information going around, just to let you know.
Well.
Not from our city, by the way. I meant, I'm getting emails from my neighbors saying, this is what's permitted, this is what's not, and it's just not accurate.
I appreciate that, clearly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, George has been sending out messages on basically a daily basis to the email blast. I think that we need a message that basically tells people at this very functional level, not the message to the contractors, but to the residents. This is what you need to do with your gardeners and this is the situation with your housekeeping. I think people don't understand that. And I'm not sure what other detailed items need to be listed, but I think we need a communication to our residents, which I'm prepared to do, and I can work with George on that. But I think we need to get something out to them that basically, I know I sent a message last week which, you know, communicated about staying home when you're sick, but we're at a whole different level now. Bill?
Through the mayor?
Yeah.
Did you cover childcare, in-home childcare?
That's exempt.
That's, that's an essential service.
Okay, all right, fine. Okay, thank you.
So, so Rick, I feel one of the things we could do in addition to the city sending out a blast, we could ask the ADAP team also to coordinate with their residents. Each, you know, each area coordinator is, you know, has been asked to communicate and touch base with all of their residents to find out if there's a need for food delivery and things like that. In fact, I got an email on that just today, that there's going to be a meeting in a week or so where we're going to try and, you know, make sure that we're facilitated to do that. And so, you know, the ADAP community also can can help with the communication out from the city. So that's just an extra tool that the city, you know, can use, and I think that we should use because, you know, we do support ADAP financially and these are extraordinary times and we should, you know, ask them to participate.
I think they'd gladly participate.
In the interest of consistent message, which is exactly the point Mike was bringing up, with the mayor and the city manager creating a letter and actually, you know, having a singular message and then ADAP can distribute that message or make contact with that letter and handing that to residents of concern in their areas of interest. But I think that keeping the consistency, which is exactly what's been the problem, there's so many different, you know, things going on, and I think that even if you polled all five of us on all the things in the letter that the county has distributed, we probably have different takes of it. But if we do a direct letter through the mayor and the city manager creating it with the direction that we've given, I think that that, you know, would be the step that the ADAP people, if they were utilizing something, to hand that like a flyer or a letter from would be the point of takeoff.
Yeah, Carrie, I wasn't suggesting that they do their own interpolation of what we've said. You know, whatever the town says, this is the official communication.
Yeah, yeah.
They could, they could send it out. We should have Anthony send it out, we should maybe do a mailer, but they can also touch residents and not touch them, by the way, because it's.
Absolutely.
But they could make sure that their residents in their areas know that these are the rules that are out there, that's all. I'm just saying it's another point of communication.
No, absolutely. More that they can get in their hands or it in their hands, period, is good.
I think that's great. I think it'd be very helpful to have a really simple and blunt FAQ that just said, you know, can my gardener work? Can my house cleaner come in? You know, just, if my toilet's stuffed up, can I call a plumber, you know, that kind of stuff. Not too many, but maybe, I don't know, eight or nine examples and just yes, no answers with a sentence or so explaining why would be really helpful.
Would be helpful.
Easy as we can.
Can do.
Yep.
And I think most people go to the town website, and so if we could put a big banner or something, some obvious link, you know, right across the front of the town website, that'd be very helpful.
Working on that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I know I need a motion on the resolution to approve the emergency services. Mona, do you think we've given sufficient direction or do you think we need an actual motion on the direction issue, pretty big issue?
I think, and I'll have the city manager opine on this, but I think that the direction has been clear and you only need to do a motion on the resolution.
Okay.
Agreed. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number fifteen, the resolution of declaring an emergency and what that entails along with the discussion items on in-home, in-home support from cleaning to landscaping to construction.
Second. Okay, can we do a roll call, Anthony?
Yes, Councilmember Weest.
Yes, I, yay.
Widmer.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
I'm there to call you.
Yes. Okay, we're now moving on to item sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and thank you to those on the call who have waited long for this particular item at the end of the meeting. Although you may be at home with a glass of wine, that's much better than sitting in a council meeting. So this is approval of and authorization to execute a notice of intent to withdraw from the South Bayside Waste Management Authority. At the May twenty nineteen council meeting, the town released an RFP for solid waste procurement assistance. We awarded that to R three consulting. They assisted us in putting out an RFP for that effort. Green Waste Recovery Services responded to that RFP, and the town's subcommittee has been meeting with Green Waste with R three to discuss a possible franchise agreement. In order to exit the SBWMA to consider that franchise agreement in earnest, we need to issue a notice of intent. And then we can begin negotiations not only with the SBWMA to exit, but also with a green waste in earnest. So that's what this item is. It is that notice of intent to withdraw. It was prepared by the town's legal counsel and through my office as well. And the subcommittee provided some feedback and comments on it before it made its way to the council this evening. It can be made stronger with respect to that notice of intent to withdraw, but the idea was we issued the notice of intent. It gives us some time to sit down with the SBWMA and talk about any costs of potential withdrawal. We provide some of our rationale in the letter for that. And then if at some point we come to an agreement, then we actually withdraw. The current recology agreement terminates in December of 2020. We would need to have an agreement with Green Waste in place before that time to allow a clean transition. So with that, that concludes my staff report. I'll turn it back over to the council. The subcommittee's president as well to answer any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions of clarification? I don't see anyone stepping forward with a question of clarification. Bill?
Okay, I just wanted to also amend George's comments is that also, in addition to starting discussion, which ended with regards to discussions with SBWMA, this just initiates a discussion. It also indicates to Green Waste that there is definite interest on our part to negotiate in earnest with us, that we're serious about it and thereby hopefully improve the contract to the maximum extent. So that was the purpose of, is there twofold purpose with regards to this? Unless, unless George wants to continue and amend that comment, that was what the purpose was.
Okay. Does the other subcommittee member wish to say anything?
I would agree with what Bill just said. This just gives us an opportunity to, one, continue our conversations with Green Waste and to begin the process with SBWMA.
Okay, not seeing any other questions of clarification. Let me see if there's any public comment on this issue. Anthony, have you received any notice of public comment?
I have not.
Okay, if anybody has a public comment on this matter, if you click on your name, if you click on the participants on the bottom of your page, it will give you a list of names, and if you click on your name, you will get a raise hand option at the bottom of that window. You could click on that or you could email or text to Anthony at the number that was in the agenda. But, and we'll take public comment throughout the matter if somebody comes in later because this is an unusual situation. But in the absence of public comment, I'll bring it back to the council and take comments from council members. Nobody has a comment?
So I, this is Carrie, I will just opine a little bit in part of the process here. In moving forward, it'd give us more clarity as we, once we give the intent to withdraw, that'll give us more clarity and seriousness to SBWMA for any unanswered questions that we still may have. We'll be able to iron those out because they will take us seriously. And I think they have taken us seriously to a degree, but this is just truly, you know, if I might say, a real door opener for conversation.
And I mean, I guess I have a question, which is, given the unusual circumstances that we find ourselves in with the shelter at home and the virus, just wondering how much is going to move forward here? I assume that upon approving this, the town would give that notice to SBWMA and they would probably want to set up a meeting with the subcommittee to talk about it. Does that make sense?
More than likely. I have on the R three side with Green Waste, I've already got calendared several meetings to begin those discussions, and those are all telephonic meetings, electronic. So I assume the same thing would occur on the SBWMA side. We would sit down with the subcommittee and whoever the SBWA wants to appoint to have those discussions.
Okay. Bill, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody that giving notice is a, there is a timeframe under which you must give notice. And so giving notice earlier rather than waiting till the absolute last minute is prudent. We do, I will also remind you, we do have a signed contract with Recology that we can exercise anytime between now and December thirty first. And we, you know, if we give notice and say we'd like to withdraw and we can't negotiate something, we would stay in the SBWMA. So I see absolutely no downside to this except for the fact that if we don't show that we are serious about moving forward in this manner, then, you know, if I was Green Waste, I probably would be holding something back and understanding that, you know, this isn't the final negotiation. So, so I believe that it's prudent and for our interest, for our ratepayers, and I realize the town doesn't pay the fee, but the ratepayers do, that we take this step, move forward and do our best for our residents.
Okay, George, I'd just like to confirm if we give the notice of withdrawal, which is what this action item is, if we decide to reverse that, we can withdraw that notice? I know we have to give the notice if we're going to do it by some date in June, but is it completely in our control, once we give the notice, we can still withdraw it?
Mona can probably comment further, but my understanding is we do have to come to some agreement with the SBWMA with respect to our withdrawal, and they have to vote on it. So there are some steps along the way.
That is, this is Mona, that is correct. That is, this is Mona, if that is correct. The purpose of this notice is to ensure that we preserve all of our options moving forward. We could request, as stated in the letter to SBWMA, that we no longer wish to move forward, but there are at least two other issues that first need to be resolved prior to withdrawal occurring.
And...
I don't see any...
Giving this notice...
And I don't see...
...to address those.
Yes, and that's, so the notice actually serves dual purposes. One, to demonstrate compliance with the terms of withdrawal, should we, should the town decide to move in that direction, and secondly, to position the town to, at this point, obtain as much information as necessary to determine the cost of withdrawal, and to request that information from the JPA.
Great. Okay, thank you. Bill, do you have a comment?
Yeah, you can remember from our last meeting when we discussed this, we need to give notice, we need to negotiate with the cost, and there has to be a vote of the board members. I will share with you that I did have a brief conversation with the chairman of the SBWMA Board, and, you know, he called me, and, you know, we had a very friendly chat, and, you know, I thought that, he told me also at that time that due to the coronavirus, that there was not gonna be a meeting, and I may be wrong, but there was not gonna be a meeting in March, and there was probably not gonna be a meeting in April, and the next meeting was gonna be in May, if I remember right. And so, you know, given the unprecedented times we are, it's best that we send the letter in now to at least get on the docket of any future meetings, so we can at least have a conversation. Okay?
Can I make a motion to approve and authorize to execute a notice of intent to withdraw from the South Bay Management Authority?
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we do a roll call, Anthony?
Councilmember Weest?
Aye.
Widmer?
Aye.
Lemprest?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
She may not be on the line.
Okay. And Mayor Degolia?
Yes. I think that's the end of the agenda. Anyone has a report that they wish to make? Are there any reports?
Can I make...
Go ahead.
Can I make one comment? I want to compliment the mayor and staff and George on all their efforts keeping on top, and Bill as well. I understand that he's been in a ton of calls as well, and I know that the lines have been packed and busy with everybody that's elected, trying to get on, there's just only so much capacity, but I think that a tremendous effort's been made on some individuals, and I just wanted to recognize and thank them for all their efforts to help this community move forward.
Appreciate that. We'll pass that along.
Thank you, Kerry. I mean, just, I want to say, this is, we all know, this is a big deal, and I don't think we know how big an impact this is going to have on us. Right now, we are doing our damnedest to reduce the spread of this virus so that we can protect our healthcare systems. Ultimately, it's very likely that every single one of us is gonna get this virus unless a vaccine comes up sooner, and we don't have defenses for it, but what we can't, and so we can't really do much about that, but we can do, and what we are doing is to try to limit the exposure so that we reduce the impact on the healthcare. We can see what's going on in Europe right now is truly horrendous, where they're having to set some people, doctors are having to make judgments about who lives and who dies because they just don't have the equipment and facilities to support everybody, and God forbid that we end up there. So we're doing everything we can to stop it, and several of you, I'm sure, were on the conference call that happened with the county, and there were more than 125 electeds on that call.
Yep.
That's a really serious level of engagement.
Right.
Absolutely.
Well, motion to adjourn.
Okay. We are adjourned from our first 100% remote meeting. Thank you, Anthony, for all the work that you did to make this happen. I think it came off very well. We were able to take public comment. I'm sure we'll find some improvements, but I think it's been a very good job. Thank you.
Absolutely. Cheers, everyone.
Cheers. Good night.
Bye, thank you.